I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the regular meeting of the Marshalltown School District School Board. It is 5:00 PM on September 21st. Welcome to all of you who are with us, and welcome to those who will be watching us on delayed broadcast or on YouTube now. Allow me to introduce the board members at the table with me. From the right, we have Karina Hernandez, Bob Unti, Sean Heitman. From the left, we have Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, Sarah Faltas. And here at the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold. She is the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schudi, the School District Superintendent, and I'm Bea Niblock. If you are wishing to address the Board this evening during public comment time, please sign in on the pink sheet on the speaker's table. You'll have five minutes to speak. The Board will not be able to respond to you at this time according to our Board policy, but we thank you for your comments. Please read with me the mission statement of the Marshalltown School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." Stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have an agreement that we added with U.S. Cellular for the purpose of hotspot purchases, and I believe that's on behalf of St. Francis for which we have some federal funds that flow through us to them.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
No move.
Second.
Miller Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Mr. Sodders?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a trek. Did you have a bite to eat first?
What's that?
Did you have a bite to eat first?
I was able to wolf down a sandwich right before. So tonight, we have a recognition. We have some great folks back here. They are from our technology department. And tomorrow, September 22nd, is IT Professionals Day, so we wanted to bring them here and just recognize them for all the great work they've been doing, which they've been quite busy lately, as you guys all know.
So I ask Mrs. Amy Harmson to come up and introduce her staff. And I think people have heard me talk often about the high-quality technology personnel that we have under normal circumstances, and they've even had to up their game a little bit more here in the recent past during the COVID era, so.
Yes. First of all, I inherited a wonderful team, and right away, I knew they were great and they were highly qualified for what they were doing. Mr. Mike Britt stepped up right away, and he transitioned from our role from district server specialist to network and security specialist. And I could not sing his praises more highly. Jen Harrington, she actually is kind of doing two combined roles because right away, I saw how wonderful she was at organization and with people and coordination. So she is doing kind of a combined role of overseeing all district student devices and then also all of the POs, all of the purchasing. It all just makes so much sense because of all the inventory we have to have one person do all of that. So she's been integral in this as well. We have our three techs. We have Janet Garcia. She, you can come on up, Janet. She's a tech. She's amazing. These are the faces that our schools see, and every one of the schools speaks so highly of our techs. Janet has been amazing. Alex Bartels, same thing. He's someone who whenever I say, hey, can you try this? He's like, yeah, I've done that before. It's no problem. So. And we've got Sebastian in the back, Ramirez. He is just very passionate about technology, so I really appreciate that. We've got Ricardo in the back, Garcia. Ricardo is one of the new hires. He has been amazing. He jumped right in, and not only is he doing most or all of the Chromebook repair, but then he also stepped up and did a lot of the hotspots, getting the hotspots out to families, coordinating with MediaCom. So him and Jen have really been doing a lot of that. Janet's amazing at technology, but she's also been helping coordinate a lot and making phone calls, which was never supposed to be what techs were going to do. Instead, they've all shown me their people skills and how amazing they are with people. Then we have Andrew Klossman. He's our newest hire. He's the district server specialist, and we've got all these amazing, very, very technical things that I know he's going to be capable of doing, but instead, we were like, hey, can you go help fix projectors on day one? And he stood up to the task amazingly well and has just been helping however he can. So I could not be more proud of this team and thankful for them.
Thank you all for the service you give to the district. Looking at the consent agenda, are there any corrections to the September 8th minutes? Any items of note in personnel, Dr. Ryan?
No, ma'am.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have the agreement that Dr. Schudi spoke about before the meeting began, or at the beginning of the meeting, we have counseling service agreement with Center Associates, and we have a subcontract with Mid-Iowa Community Action to implement evidence-based curriculum at Miller Middle School. Open enrollments, we have three in and two out. Any items of note in bills?
No, ma'am.
Are there any questions on the financial report? We have a number of instruments from the band instrumental music department that will be disposed of, sold at the highest price person. I'm sure that we have a number of people who would like the cymbals. Are there any questions on any of those items? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, Unti.
Second.
Unti, Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Is there anyone on the pink sheet?
Nope.
Moving right on to, I don't see them here.
We have a video.
Pardon me?
A video for the Bobcat U or whatever.
My name is Tanya Yafni. This summer, I had the pleasure of serving as the coordinator for Bobcat University for fourth and fifth grade students through Lenahan Intermediate. During the school year, I am an instructional coach at Lenahan. The first aspect of the program that I would like to tell you about is the Learn From Home portion of Bobcat University, which was new for us this summer. A total of 18 teachers created lessons that were uploaded to the same Learn From Home website that we used during school closure at the end of last school year. Teachers use the same lesson plan template that was provided in the spring during school closure to provide consistency for students. These lessons were available for all students in the district, and students were encouraged to access these lessons each Sunday via Infinite Campus Messenger. Lessons were provided for the weeks of June 15th through July 31st. Paper packets were copied on Fridays and distributed on bus routes and at schools over lunch on Mondays. The lessons were provided for math and literacy for preschool through eighth grade, guidance for preschool through sixth grade, and science at fifth and sixth grade.
Hello, I am Claire Wing, and I was a lead teacher for Bobcat U this past summer at the elementary age range. I am here to tell you a little bit about Bobcat U and give you an overview of what this past summer looked like. So approximately 20 identified at-risk students from each grade in each school were invited to participate. That equals about 120 students at each grade level among the district split up between teachers. Bobcat U was also offered at the five, six, and the seven, eight level while being a little different within numbers invited. These students were invited to engage in synchronous learning, or live learning, for an hour each day. This took place from June 15th to July 31st. Students were asked to log in, and teachers were asked to engage students in literacy and math content. This content included work with essential standards in math, CKLA curriculum material, and really great reading, as well as asking students outside of that live hour to engage in Lexia and ST Math. The purpose of Bobcat U has always stayed the same. It's to provide academic opportunities during the summer months to at-risk students. While it was a very unique summer, we also did have a lot of fun, and we did see success. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or any of the other presenters of this. We would be happy to share all the success and all more data that you would be interested in. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Face, and I was one of the lead teachers for K3 Bobcat University this summer, and I'm going to be showing you some attendance data this evening. Bobcat University met daily from June 15th to July 31st. There was no school July 3rd, so that was a total of 34 days. We decided to track those who attended versus those who were invited. Those who attended five-plus days, or approximately 15% of the days, were the first collection of data. Then, since the MICA grant tracked 60%, or 20-plus days, that was a second collection of data. I would like to go show you the difference between the elementary schools, as well as Lenahan and Miller, in both numbers and in charts. As we wait for the information to load on my computer, you can see here that there are tables for all of the elementary schools, which would be kindergarten through third grade students, and then also for Lenahan, which would have been fourth and fifth graders, and then Miller, which would have been sixth and seventh grade, and would be the fifth and sixth graders for 2021 and the seventh and eighth graders for 2021. So looking at this data, we have the school listed here, how many of the students were invited, the number of students that attended at least five times, and then that put into a percent. And then that is shown on each of the graphs as well. So this first one has each of the elementary buildings. The blue line represents the number of students who were invited. The red line shows the number of students who attended at least five times. Then this one just below it is the same thing, except it shows the number of students who attended at least 20 times. And you can compare the two, between five times and 20 times, just to see the difference. Then the blue chart here just shows the percentage of students that attended per school. And again, this is just each of the elementary schools, and this is five days or more, and then this one is 20 days or more. Over here, we have Lenahan and Miller. How many were invited, how many attended at least five times, and that percentage. And that's shown here in the chart. And then same here, only the 20 times that they attended, or the 60%. Down below here, we have each of the elementary schools broken down by grade level. So these are just with the five-plus attended. These were not done, in summary, with the 60% or the 20-plus days. But we have each of the elementary schools, and it shows per grade level how many were invited and how many attended. And then again, what percentage of that was, what was the percentage of that for each school by grade level? So I will slowly scroll through those, so you have a chance to take a look at those. And if you're wanting to take a closer look at this, we can also get you a printed copy for you to examine closer at your request. Thank you.
Can you just be put on the board?
One of the biggest challenges that faced our teachers at the beginning of the summer was how to engage students and keep them engaged in a virtual setting. In the spring closure, we had done some asynchronous work with lessons and then some synchronous work with Google Meet, but this was a whole new experience for us. As is the custom in Marshalltown, though, our teachers went above and beyond. They used a variety of platforms to ensure their lessons were engaging and meaningful for students, including Google Forms, Hairdeck, NearPod, Flipgrid, Jamboard, WhiteboardFi. We were even able to use some of the things they experimented with in Bobcat U to help inform our return-to-learn planning this summer. These platforms allowed students, or allowed teachers, to see student work as they progress throughout the lesson and over the course of the summer. We want to end with a big thank you. Thank you for your continued support of Bobcat University in the Marshalltown Community School District. We also think we need to make sure we thank our teachers. They were willing to take on the added challenges of supporting students in a virtual environment during a pandemic with little training. Bobcat U was truly a team effort this summer.
Are you going to answer questions, Paula?
I was, yes. And they prepared that virtually, not knowing when we would come back to in-person meetings, so I hope that was okay. I think they did a nice job of summarizing the work that happened this summer, but if there are any specific questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them or find out for you.
Questions?
Does the attendance? I noticed there's a big difference in the number of students that attended five days versus the 20 days. Is that typical, or was that because of the online? Do you feel like it was different?
Yeah, we've struggled with attendance every summer in Bobcat U, and we are inviting our most at-risk students, and so that's a challenge in and of itself because they typically don't have strong attendance to begin with. And we've not tracked it with just five days in the past, so it would be hard for me to tell you.
But the low attendance has been typical for this?
Yes, definitely typical. But I was able to sit in on every grade level and every classroom of those 18 teachers, and they were just like dancing their tails off. I mean, the teachers were literally just, you know, putting really interesting content out there in front of the kids, and, you know, kids are, you know, laying in their recliners or, you know, out on the back porch, and, you know, they're just still getting them to, you know, talk about fractions, and it was, it was really, really awesome. I'm really proud of our teachers.
Lisa, how many, did you measure how many kids per day on average participated in Bobcat University? You showed five days and 20 days, but how many showed up every day on average?
We took, we did take daily attendance for every grade by teacher. I'd have to pull that from you, for you, by school, but on average, it was around 30% of the kids would come.
Yeah, okay. I was trying to, in my head, figure, okay, how many kids on average per day do we serve? How much money does Bobcat University cost in total? How do we measure success based on the amount of money that we invested in it?
Yeah.
Maybe you could comment on that whole metric.
I know. I had some wide eyes looking at me at the beginning because when we typically staff Bobcat, which MICA and others help us do, we'd invited these kids already in February. And then we had extended information about hiring for the summer to way more than 18 teachers. It takes a lot more than 18 teachers to run a typical Bobcat university. But I said, I think we've thrown the net really wide with the kids, like we over-invited, knowing that we generally only get 30%, but then we scaled, or I scaled back our staffing. So, I mean, the teacher leaders were like, what if, what if they all come? We invited, you know, however many, 17 kindergartners from Anson. And I said, hey, let's be honest, probably we're going to get about 25 or 30, and that'll be a manageable number with this school and that school combined with that teacher. And, and that's kind of what we saw in the Google Meets. They weren't, they weren't trying to manage too many students and instruct. But we had a lot of students who were invited that didn't come, which was unfortunate because I thought it was a pretty, pretty great program.
So of the students that do come, you're inviting about 120 students per grade level, and you're saying about a third of them come. Is that evenly distributed among the grade levels, or is it more, or does it work better with some than others?
Right. So we meet in January with the principals, and we look at each school and each grade level, and we look at at-risk, and we think about 15 to 20% of our population, and we look at our mid-year testing, and then that helps us create a list of invitees. And that's where our partnership with MICA comes in, because then they do the labor of getting invitations out and sharing those. We were lucky to get parent-teacher conferences in here in Marshalltown less March before closure, and so parents had already heard about the program and were aware of it and had sort of committed to it. And so it was just a matter of lots of phone calls and lots of emails, trying to get parents to say yes or no.
Would you get that presentation downloaded onto Board Docs, please?
The video?
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, the PowerPoint, so that people can see the data.
It's, okay. It's not a PowerPoint, but I could get you a slide. Is it, do you want a slide from, do you want this, the charts, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Yes.
I want to say it's a Screencastify or some other new tool that our teachers are using. So it's not so easy to just download a document, but I will get you the charts and share it with them.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm very hopeful that we don't have to do this next summer the same way.
Yeah.
That we can go back to normal.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was kind of fitting that our tech department got honored because we couldn't have done this without them, because they were helping get all the devices out to the kids in the hotspots for the kids that signed up.
Okay, do you want to move on to PSYAC?
Oh, yeah. Sure. Let's talk about PSYAC. So before you tonight, I'm asking for you to review the membership for 2021 School Improvement Advisory Committee. And we, as required, have representation of staff, parents, board members, administrators, and we will have some student members added to that, too. We just don't have the names yet from Mrs. Wyatt.
Are there any questions for Dr. Stevenson? May I have a motion to approve the advisory committee for the 2021 school year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Faltas Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now you can get your book and come back. Okay, bookie people, come on up.
So I think we have a brief video to open up.
Thirty years ago, my life was forever changed by a teacher who stood up and challenged my negative assumptions in a most dramatic way. At the time, I was wearing two hats. I was running an ice cream company that had become famous when People Magazine chose our blueberry as the best ice cream in America. I was also the spokesperson for a statewide group of business leaders who were determined to improve public education and like many businessmen and women in your community today. I was convinced of three things. First, public schools need to change. They are archaic selecting and sorting mechanisms out of sync with the needs of the time. Second, the people working inside the schools, they are the problem. Obstacles to meaningful change, protected by tenure, shielded by a monopolistic bureaucracy. And third, if you would just run your schools like a business, we would get the graduates we need. I was representing the business group when my fateful encounter with a teacher occurred. We were in her high school auditorium. It was 8:00 AM on a Monday, the first day back after a Christmas break. A month earlier, her superintendent had asked me to speak in an in-service, and now that the day had arrived, it was very clear that my reputation as a critic had preceded me. The staff was not happy. But this is a story I cannot tell sitting down. So I'm sitting on this little stage in this little high school auditorium, and with every 10 or 12 more teachers walk into the room, the ambient temperature drops another 30 degrees. Icy rage permeates the room. The principal of the high school comes out, not the superintendent who invited me. The principal comes out, he stands at the podium, he says, good morning. This here is Mr. Volmer. He's come from a business group in the state capital to tell us how to run our schools, and he walked off the stage. I don't care. I'm good at what I do. I got up, I started to give my speech. I get about seven sentences in, and the teachers did what the teachers always did when I would speak in those days. Openly grade papers in front of me. Share file folders with one another. Talk to people five rows behind them. I'm giving a speech, there's a roar in this room. But you're not going to bully me. I start pouring it on. What's the matter with you people? You know, if I ran my business the way you people operate your schools, I wouldn't be in business very long. Teachers, you all cloak yourselves in tenure. Administrators, you shield yourselves behind this monopolistic bureaucracy. And you and the board, you use the rules and regulations that those hoodlums in the state capital think up in the middle of the night. You use those rules and regulations as excuses. Listen, in business, we invented total quality management. We understand continuous improvement, zero defects. If you just did what we did, blah, 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 blah. After 15 minutes, nobody's grading papers. All pencils are down, and they're glaring at me like this. I get to the end of my talk, forget applause. It is dead silent in that room, and now I have to admit, I'm a tad intimidated. So I go to walk off the stage, and there in the wings is the superintendent. The chicken has not shown his face once, but he's. I looked at her. She appeared to be pleasant. She was nicely done. I thought, I'll start with her, she'll be polite. I found out years later, she was a 27-year veteran high school English teacher who'd been laying in the bushes for me for about an hour. She starts off as nice as you please. Mr. Volmer, we understand you make good ice cream. Well, I was. Well, I was insufferable in those days. "Excuse me, ma'am, best ice cream in America." "Thank you. Thank you very much." "Yes, sir. Something tells me it's rich and smooth. 17% butterfat, low overrun, creamy. You're going to love it." "Yes, sir, I'm sure I will." "Something tells me that you must use nothing but grade-A ingredients. Your nuts, your berries, your flavorings." And like a jerk, I interrupted her. "Excuse me, ma'am. At the Great Midwestern Ice Cream Company, our specification to the supplier is in A. It's AAA." And a little smile shot across her face that I did not understand at the time. "Yes, sir. If you're walking through your factory and you come out onto your receiving dock and a shipment arrives, I don't know, a shipment of blueberries, and those blueberries are not up to your AAA standards, what do you do?" And in the silence of that room, you could hear her trap snap. I knew I was dead meat. But I wasn't going to lie to the lady. I said, "Ma'am, I would send them back." She springs to her feet. She shoves her finger towards my face. She says, "That's right. You would send them back. We can never send back the blueberries our suppliers send us. We take them, big, small, rich, poor, hungry, abused, brilliant, creative, homeless, frightened, cautious, ADHD, juvenile rheumatoid arthritis, English is their second language. We take them all, Mr. Volmer, and that's why it's not a business, it's school." Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would have gotten the point. But all 250 of them jumped to their feet, "Yeah, blueberries, pal! Blueberries!" And so began my long transformation. Over the years, people have claimed that the teacher painted with a broad brush. Of course she did. She had 90 seconds. But that does not weaken her essential point. Unlike almost every business, public schools have no control over the quality of the raw material. They take the blueberries that the parents send. Their revenue stream is a hostage of federal, state, and local politics. They're constantly being shoved around by a horde of special interest groups and they are accountable to multiple customers who cannot agree on what the finished product should look like. It's not a business. But what's important here is that she stood up. Rather than bite her tongue and just turn away, she exercised her power. She countered my bumper sticker free-market rhetoric with a cold blast of classroom reality, speaking with the conviction of someone who lives it every day. She pushed back armed with the one weapon that everyone working inside a public school has today, the truth. And it's time for everyone to follow her lead.
He's quite the storyteller, isn't he? How many of you heard Yuri Howe a number of years ago? Few hands. He totally reminds me of Gary Howe and his ability to tell a story.
So between, um, the 15-minute video that we watched at the last board meeting, which spent a lot of time talking about the burdens, so to speak. Uh, the expectations, responsibilities have been placed on public schools since the inception. And then this story, the blueberry story, which, um, really kind of epitomizes his 180-year return from really being one of the lead faces for No Child Left Behind in the state of Iowa, quite honestly, when he was heading up the Iowa Business Council. Um, and, uh, most of the premise behind that and, uh, the need for schools to change. And then having come full circle after having actually taken the time to speak to educators and as he talked about in the story, actually visit and spend days in schools serving in different roles. What are, what were other people's, um, takeaways from what they read in the first part? Which kind of sets the stage for the rest of the book.
The idea that we have, we're working in a school system that was designed basically to only educate the top students well. And everybody else was supposed to get just enough education to enter the workforce. And we have a society now where that just doesn't work anymore. These kids are entering, um, a culture where they have to learn rapidly. They have to be able to constantly develop new skills. And we need to be training all of the kids. We need to be teaching all of them. And that's why his business model didn't work. We're not starting with, you know, 5,000 identical little children walking in. Every one of them has different talents and we need to be able to nurture all of those. But that's not the way we're currently set up.
And that kind of relates to something that I've shared and the board's heard before from other people where, you know, even when I was attending school, unbeknownst to me, the reality is only about 30% of graduates needed to go on to any form of post-secondary education. And 70% of those that graduated high school could literally walk right into the workforce and have really good-paying jobs. And, you know, here in town, it was very evident whether it was Lennox, Fisher, Swifts, what have. And, and in this day of age, as you were alluding to, that's kind of flipped on its head. Now, um, approximately 70% of the livable wage jobs require some level of education beyond high school. And so all students need to have a solid foundation regardless of where they're going, whether it's the military, whether it's work force, whether it's community college, vocational school, or a four-year college. Uh, because to, to access the jobs that exist in today's economy, um, they need something beyond high school, although it doesn't have to be a four-year degree.
And to me, another really important part, and I've read ahead, so hopefully this isn't the first part that you all have read, but was the idea of time. We, we have been operating on the assumption that your smartest children learn the fastest and there's really no research that supports that. And so we are, and my discipline was reading. The idea of teaching children to decode, which is a big part of teaching reading. In our culture, we pretty much stopped that at the end of second grade. Well, we know, we have a lot of data that shows us that up to a third of the students don't have it yet. But we're done teaching it. You know, and he's pointing out, why are we done teaching it? You know, we need to be taking these kids where they're at and continuing to teach them... And it's not just reading that does this. I just happen to know that discipline. But the idea is that these children can continue to learn. And we tend to, to tie curriculum, you know, at this grade, we teach this, and this grade, we teach this. But actually, if it's an important skill, we need to teach it until that child, as long as he's in the system, we keep teaching it.
I'll make sure to use this, right?
Yes.
You know, I found it interesting looking through how much curriculum has been added to schools decade by decade. You know, that was a really, even for someone who's spent time reading and studying this, surprised me how much has been added over the years. But the time hasn't increased. The day is the same amount of length. But on top of that, we were teaching a little bit of everything to everyone.
I think in the chapter that, um, he was an aide for the day, I, I thought it was hysterical first. But, um, one of the things that he said was when he entered the building, he remembered. That's what it looked like when he had been in school. And, which is a sad state of affairs. But there, I used to tell my staff the same joke in a different way. The only place that Rip Van Winkle would be comfortable if he were to come back awake now is the public schools. Which is truly a sad state of affairs.
And yet, within that very traditional classroom, it looks so similar with all those little desks and its orderly little rolls, rows. Um, in my 40-year career, I went from a blackboard in a building with no photocopy machine. And I ended my career teaching online during the COVID in the spring. You know, so, so many things have changed, except we are still trying to work all those changes into archaic structure where children are sorted by age. I mean, where else in society would you sort everybody by one-year age increments? We have all the 25-year-olds in the room sitting together. Where else do we do that? So it's an archaic system and we have to figure out how to fix it.
I thought another interesting point was what I think he called the, the great conversation, meaning a, that school districts and communities need to have a partnership. It includes, he, he said four values, I think, understanding, trust, permission, and support. And I think the, that's a different challenge, um, as well, uh, for a variety of reasons.
I was impressed by the, uh, I was impressed by the narrative device he used to open the book, which, as I recall, was him talking about his father, who had turned out to have an extremely successful career. Uh, his father was a, sort of a problem child in school. And so I, I find it kind of funny that he turned out at first to be sort of critical of public schools when his father benefited directly from a teacher who worked a little bit harder to, you know, coach, coach his father, uh, when he was a boy with skills that he needed. I just find it fun, I, I find it interesting because, you know, he, he goes on to say that, you know, it is, like Jan said, and, um, later on in the, in the reading, he says, that, you know, the schools mainly were built to teach, you know, really well a smaller group of kids and then the rest. So his father, I can't help but think that without that extra effort, his father may have ended up being one of those kids. And then would he have had the career he had, which he went into details about, uh, in the reading? So I just thought that was a cool narrative device and illustrated his point really well from the beginning of the book.
I think to Bob's point, you know, a lot of those components that you mentioned, understanding, trust, support, you know, probably were eroded significantly over the 20 to 30 years of No Child Left Behind, particularly where it was more about, you know, blaming people and blaming public schools for not doing this or that, preparing kids adequately, yada, yada. And so, um, there's been, there's a lot of rebuilding that needs to be done. And I think that's, uh, really the premise of his whole message is that the schools can't do it by themselves. Parents can't do it by themselves. Businesses aren't going to be able to do it by themselves. We have to find a way to be able to productively engage and, and work together in order to, you know, um, make sure that, uh, youth are prepared for their futures and ultimately are able to successfully fill employment pipelines, uh, down the road. He talks a lot about, um, you know, during that era of No Child Left Behind, it, it being considered a people problem and him coming to a realization that it's a systems problem. Not that there aren't people problems, but it's really a systems issue. And, um, I think our district oftentimes is on the front lines of advocating for system change, like at the state level, for example. And I think back to when, um, Lisa was advocating strongly for dual-language students to be able to access the state testing for math and science and Spanish, since that's how it's taught to them. And, and basically, you know, the state had never thought about making it available in anything other than English. And they weren't prepared to, you know, do it differently. And we're, I don't want to say resistant, but they just didn't have the capability of doing it. And, uh, and so hopefully that'll be, you know, a continued conversation. And, um, most recently with, um, the number of students across the state who are learning virtually and then with a hybrid model, um, I think there are some issues of not wanting to do things differently as it relates to taking attendance for students. And again, it's, um, you know, in their view, the easy thing to do is to treat it like every day of school and to measure it by who's engaged at a certain time versus taking a look at different ways of maybe measuring, um, how to count someone in attendance who may not be able to learn at the same exact time of day as other kids and stuff.
You know, one thing about being a special educator is that much of my career, I worked with paraprofessionals. And I don't know how many paraprofessionals said, you know, until I came and worked in a school, I had no idea how hard teachers work. Because your, your memory as a child of what that teacher's doing and what you see as an adult is very different. So his idea of understanding and trust, I think the fact that this man actually visited the schools made a big difference. I mean, and it comes through in his book.
Other comments? Our reading assignment for the next time is section two.
Yeah, part two.
Part two. Which is 41 to 75. Be prepared to share at least one thing that struck you in that space of 35, 40 pages. Thank you all. Would our student representatives please come up to the speaker's table and introduce yourselves?
So we have two of our three student board reps with us this evening. And I've asked them to, um, introduce themselves to the board this evening and maybe talk a little bit about how their first couple of weeks of school have gone. And we have two of our student board reps that are in person at the high school, but on different, um, schedules as far as the hybrid goes. And then, um, one, Itzy, I think, is virtual, right?
I'm Itzy Avalos. I go by Itzy, though. My parents are Gladys and Erin Mundo. Um, I am doing virtual learning this year as a senior. So it's kind of a little bit different than how I would have expected my senior year to go. But, I mean, everyone's kind of, um, adapting to the new year and everything like that. So I'm doing, I currently am in three classes. Um, all of them are on different learning platforms. One of them is an MCC dual-credit, um, online, which is going through Canvas. The other one is through the Edmonton platform. And then the other one is on Blackboard. So navigating those three is a little tricky, but it's, it's honestly a lot easier than what I would have expected it to be. I'm, after high school, I'm thinking about pursuing my, like, my degree in psychology because my end, um, my end goal is to be some sort of therapist or psychiatrist or something along the lines of psychology. Anything else?
Also, I have a part-time job, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. I do have a part-time job at Starbucks. I work there, basically my schedule is I work all morning and then I get home and then I do school throughout the afternoon. then I do school throughout the afternoon. I do have two younger siblings, too, Erin and Gigi Mundo. They go to St. Francis Elementary School, or private school. I also went there, and it was pretty cool. And that transition to public school was something, it was an interesting transition. But yeah, and then I've been in the public school system ever since.
School activities?
Oh, yeah, school activities. So I'm in National Honor Society. I was in French Honor Society for a year. I'm in track. I do throwing events. I'm an MVP for the freshman mentoring program. I don't know, there's quite a long list. Those are the main ones I can think of right now.
I'm Haley Reed, and I am a junior at MHS. I am taking four dual-credit classes through MCC this year, and I'm taking two high school classes, so it's been a little different, that's for sure. And I have three younger brothers that go through the Marsh Town District, and they're all at different schools. My mother, Sarah Reed, she teaches at the high school, and my dad's Tony Reed, and he is an executive director at the Juvenile Detention Center, and he runs our family business.
And he has signs all over.
And he has signs. He's been working hard on his campaign, that's for sure. He, yeah. I work at Hobby Lobby, and I also am working at Subway, so that's been a hassle, that's for sure. But I'm in school, so it's been really different getting used to the arrows in school. And it's really weird, you only have like 10 maybe at the most in your classroom, so. I am involved, I've been involved in the banner program since I've been at the high school, and the basketball program and the track program. And I am starting to be an MVP this year, now that I'm a junior. So that's, that's me.
Well, welcome to both of you. We're happy to have you with us at our board meetings. Any questions for our young ladies?
Yeah, first of all, you guys are both really well-spoken. Congratulations, good job. Itzi, your virtual learning, tell me, what do you think of the volume of work, like homework and stuff, that you have to do as a virtual learner versus what you would have expected had you not been a virtual learner? Is it more difficult, less difficult, more work, less work?
I feel like for, like, the actual high school class that I'm taking, I'm taking chemistry. I feel like it's not that much, it's not a big workload like I thought. But if you think about it, like, throughout the school year, like, as if I would have taken it in class, I feel like it's not a big difference. It's just more like, you really have to commit the time to sit in front of the computer and do it every day if you want to. But even if you only work on it one or two days a week, like, you're good to go and you're staying on pace. But for my other two classes, since they are with college credit, they are a bit more work, but that's the same as with the high school. Like, I've, last year, I took a bunch of dual-credit classes, and it's a commitment, like, to take the dual-credit classes, because it is a lot of work. But I don't feel like it's any harder as if you would have taken it in class. The only thing is, like, you have to put the pressure on yourself to get it done because you're not going to school every day.
What I think I'm hearing you say, I'll just summarize and tell me if I summarize incorrectly, that your chemistry class, which is high school classes, is about the same amount of work whether you're taking it virtually or whether you were there, you think?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
For the most part, yeah. I don't feel like it's any more work than if you would have done it in class.
What I'm hearing is it's not more work, but you do have to have more self-discipline.
Yes, yes, definitely. Because if you're in class, like, you, they give you class time to do it. At home, you have to sit and make sure you're on task and getting it done.
And then Haley, are you, now, you're at school two days a week and then home now, so are you, how much, about how much time do you have to spend at home on those days that you're not in school?
I usually spend a couple hours, usually, every day. It is a lot of work that they are sending home to do on our online days. And then you go into school, and then you kind of do a little quick overview about what you had to do on your online days, and then you just continue on to the next lesson. And it's pretty self-driven as well to get it done, and they're expecting it to be done, which it's a lot.
So do you, does it help as far as with your part-time jobs, that you can do the two days on, two days off, or?
Yes, it really, it does. It's a lot of time management, and it's very, like I said, it's self-driven, you have to make sure you're getting it done, but it gives you a lot of free time.
We'll look forward to a little report from you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, the first item here is our depository resolution, and this is something that the board approves on an annual basis, and it is just identifying our financial institutions that we use during the, that we may use during the upcoming year. And there are no changes in the depositories or the amounts for the upcoming year. Pretty straightforward.
Questions for Pauline?
I'm sure you've mentioned this, but how do we choose these?
We do request for proposals every so often. As you can imagine, changing banks is a huge task with a $98 million budget or so. So we don't do that every three years or every two years, but yes, every once in a while, we will do a proposal for banking services. As far as, because I present a depository report to you each month on a monthly basis, and that tells you, you know, where our money is currently at. And as far as where we're keeping our money, we try to keep it where we're getting the highest interest rate.
I think, wasn't it, we went out to bid, was it two and a half, three years ago, when we switched banking services?
It was before I started working with the district.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution identifying financial institutions eligible to receive public funds and to establish a maximum to be kept in deposit at these institutions?
So moved. Heitman?
Second, Hernandez.
Heitman, Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Let you keep rolling.
All right, I'll keep rolling. Get to the next item here.
Fund financials.
Yeah, so I'm really happy to be here tonight to talk about our 2019, 2020 school year, fiscal year, that, just as a reminder for the new board members, our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. So we have spent the last couple months working on three different reports that are due to the Department of Ed actually this week in closing out our school year, our fiscal While fiscal '20 was unique and somewhat challenging in many ways, there is some positive news that I would like to share with you regarding our year-end numbers. The first report that is on, can you open the other one up, Amy, first? There's one attached on. And I also gave this to you because I know the numbers are hard to see. So what I want to do is just quickly review our Treasurers' Report by Fund. You recall that we have several different funds that have their own self-balancing set of books, basically, and that we cannot take, normally take money from funds and shift to other funds without specific authority to do so. So what this report is showing you is our beginning-of-the-year fund balance plus your annual revenues minus your annual expenditures equals your end-of-year fund balance. I did throw on numbers from fiscal '19 also. While two years does not a trend make, I think it's important to have some context to look at annual numbers. So a lot of times, we'll be looking at two, three, four years at a time. But I'm just going to go through each fund, and we're going to save the general fund till last, because I'd like to talk just a little bit more in-depth about the general fund. But I also included down there in the boxes towards the bottom, just some brief descriptions of the revenues, the expenditures, and what those funds can be used for. So if you look at the Student Activity Fund, which is funded entirely by gate receipts, activity ticket sales, fundraisers, donations, and it's used entirely for student extracurricular and co-curricular activities. A couple of years ago, in July of 2018, we had a beginning fund balance of $142,000. We ended June 30th, 2020 with an ending fund balance of about $200,000. That balance was down a little bit during, from the beginning of this year, but because of the closure, we had less revenue from gate receipts and things like that. So trending well there. The Management Levy Fund, we, if you'll notice that from the beginning of 2018 to the end of 2020, that fund balance has dropped from $1.8 million to $1.3 million, and we purposely did that. Your Management Fund is funded entirely by property tax, and it can only be used for very specific purposes, which are our property casualty insurance premiums, work comp insurance premiums, unemployment, and our early retirement incentive. So those are all paid for out of the Management Fund, and because we had such a big fund balance in there, we decided to change, not ask for so much through property tax so we could help in some other areas. The Pearl Fund is the Public Education and Recreation Levy. This, too, is 100% funded by property taxes. It's a 13.5 cent per thousand tax, and it can be used to update or add playgrounds, anything that basically is free to the public to use for recreational purposes. You can also run community ed programs through that fund. We currently do not do that. The Sales Tax Fund, this, of course, is primarily funded by the sale, the one-cent sales tax money that every school district gets based on a per-pupil formula. We had a really high balance in July of 18. That balance has come down because we finished the Roundhouse Project and don't currently have any big construction projects other than the tennis court going on. But that wasn't even, I think we only had one payment for the tennis court at June 30th. So anyway, that fund is, is right where we expected it to be. The Pebble Fund is the Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund. This fund is funded 100% by property tax also, and this is the fund that we use to purchase our buses, to do summer projects for buildings and grounds, maintenance, vehicle. We pay our lease out of this fund. And so you notice that fund balance went up a little bit at the end of fiscal '20, and there were a lot of projects in, in progress that hadn't been paid for yet at June 30th. So that is why that's up a little bit. The Debt Service Fund, this fund is used entirely just to pay our principal and interest payments on our authorized debt indebtedness. This usually has a high balance at the end of the year because our debt payments are due on July 1st, so the very next day, that fund balance basically goes to zero. Enterprise Fund is our Student Nutrition Fund. This is where the school breakfast and lunch programs are run through. Primarily, the revenue in this fund comes from the federal government for those programs. You may notice that the fund balance for the Nutrition Fund is up a little bit, and that is also after we did that indirect cost recovery from the Nutrition Fund to the General Fund this year that the board approved, I think in May or June, so. The Internal Service Fund is the fund that we run our self-funded health plan through, our self-funded dental plan, and our flex spending account goes through there. So the good news there, too, is that we did increase the fund balance a little bit, which will help us grow that claim stabilization reserve that we are trying to do. Scholarship Funds and the Support Trust Fund, we were using both of those funds for the same thing, and the Support Trust Fund really isn't used for scholarships for students, so we actually closed that fund out at June 30th and moved it to the Scholarship Fund. So we currently have about $77,000 in scholarship funds that have been donated to the district that we oversee and, and pay out to colleges and students each fall. Does anybody have any questions on those funds before we talk about the General Fund?
Pauline, on the Pearl Funds, those funds are shared with the City of Marsh Town, and I think as far as the Park and Recs go, a lot of their funds are used, I think, more for programming costs, whereas we tend to use ours for playground improvements and stuff like that.
Yep. So on the General Fund, you're going to notice that our fund balance is up at the end of fiscal '20 to about $6.5 million, which is the good news. And then you can, can you pull that other one up, Amy? The second page that I gave you is just a little bit more analysis regarding the General Fund revenues and expenditures, and we don't want to go into a whole bunch of detail here, but I do want to kind of explain why that fund balance is up a little bit. Obviously, you are aware that during the closure, we did, as other school districts in Iowa did, and we continued to pay our employees throughout the closure. But what we didn't have during the closure was a lot of payroll expenses for substitute teachers, substitute paras, substitute admin assistants. So we had less expenses because of the closure. And the other thing that happened, which is really good, is that we had more revenue than we budgeted for. So both of those things helped to grow that fund balance at the end of the year. Now, the other thing that I want to note, too, is that that $6.5 million is not all money that's available to pay utilities or to buy diesel fuel. About 25% of that fund balance is categorical funding, and so it can only be used, I, it can only be used for specific purposes, such as professional development or early literacy, you know, very specific purposes that we can't take that money and just pay the utility bill with it. So about 25% of that fund balance is categorical. The other thing to note on the ending fund balance is that in our five-year projections, our modeling that we do, and the budget that the board just approved in April, the certified budget, our projection was to be at about $6.5 million at the end of this current year, at fiscal '21. So what the closure has done is kind of put us ahead a year in building up that solvency ratio that has been low for the last several years. So I think that's really good news. When we look at the analysis for the revenue, I personally like to be within the When we look at the analysis for the revenue, I personally like to be within 1% of budget for revenues and expenditures. Obviously, it's a little bit easier to do for revenues than expenditures, but we did pretty good. The revenue from local sources, that 708,000, that is primarily the IRS refund that we received. We of course did not budget that we were going to receive that because we didn't know that we were going to receive it. So that is primarily what accounts for that. We also did, as I mentioned earlier, that indirect cost transfer from the Nutrition Fund. And we were able to transfer at year-end, $150,000 from the Nutrition Fund to the General Fund for all of that indirect cost recovery. There are several things that, expenses that apply to the Nutrition Fund but aren't allowable in the Nutrition Fund. And so indirect cost recovery is the means to recover some of those expenses. So we did that this year. The other thing that you're going to see from this past year is that due to the closure, there was a lot of title funding or title programming that wasn't able to be provided. So we spent less money in the federal sources, and that accounts for that 10% there. On the expenditure side, as I said before, we did have some savings due to the closure on teachers, paras, admin assistance. We underspent our expenditure bout, expenditure budget by $1,690,000. 890 of that is just on the salaries and benefits, which is 83% of that underspending. But it's important for everybody to remember that on both the revenue side and the expenditure side, these are one-time savings. It's not a recurring increase. So like I said before, this will help us get closer to that 8% minimum solvency ratio. It kind of pushes us ahead a year. But the other thing that we also know is that in this current year, we're probably going to have some expenses that we weren't planning on due to COVID and the closure also. The other items that, that look different on there, you'll notice that for purchased services, the 300 object codes, we overspent in that area and we underspent in the 600 object code. And so we have a very specific chart of accounts and the DE created a new coding thing for us this year. So a lot of what we would have coded to a 600, we instead coded to a 300. So those two things kind of offset each other. What else? Professional development costs were way down, of course, because we didn't let anybody or nobody wanted to go anywhere, could go anywhere. So both in the teacher compensation that we pay for professional development time and in travel costs, those expenses were way down for the year. So I guess in closing, you know, it was, financially, fiscally, we ended the year in a good position. And I hope that we'll manage through this year too.
Questions for fallout?
I think you did remarkably well in managing this through a disaster too, or two disasters.
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, because I know we had supplies and other COVID-related things that we bought prior to the end of the fiscal year. Is some of that already reflected in the expenditures or are those?
Some of that is, but as, for an example, the CARES funding that we got, about 860,000, we spent, actually spent less than 200,000 of that by June 30th. We had ordered, we had a lot of stuff on order but had not received it by June 30th. So that CARES funding that we received that was not spent, we have to call that deferred revenue. And so that's still, that's not included in here. So yeah, we will spend that this year then. We have the remainder of the CARES funding and then we have about 255,000 in federal Gears funding for the technology. So we will easily spend that 1.1, 1.2 million this year.
Then we're also hoping and/or working for, towards some FEMA reimbursement as well for PPE.
Yep. We have a, an application, a request for public assistance into FEMA for the COVID emergency. And so we will submit everything that we can to FEMA. We know that there's some things that they won't cover. We know that there's some things that we don't know if they're going to cover. But we'll just submit everything and see what, what they will reimburse us for. And then anything that isn't reimbursed will get coded to either the CARES funding or the Gears funding.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
You're still on board?
Still on board, okay. So for, for our newer board members, you might be aware that we have master contracts with several different classifications of employees. And the teachers have what we call a salary schedule that they can move steps and they can also move lanes by getting more education. And so the steps, you automatically get a step increase every year. But there are many, many of our teachers that pursue additional education and qualify for a lane change every year. So this list is that list of teachers that qualified for the lane change this fall, which means they actually get a new contract reflecting that lane change and that increase in pay. So that's what we're approving here is their increase in pay. And we currently have 55% of our teaching staff this fall have masters or a doctorate. So that's really impressive to have over 50% with masters.
Continuous learners.
Yes.
What is the percentage you said? What was the percentage of that?
What's that?
What was the percentage of?
55.
55% have masters.
Okay.
So we're just asking the board for approval to change their contracts due to the lane changes.
May I have a mo, oh, go ahead.
Move for move. Second.
Miller Unti, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. The motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Dr. Shutey.
Karina, do you want to speak towards your policies, please?
I can.
Okay. Where should we start? 200, sorry, 202.7 individual board members. That one, we're adding.
What's your recommendation?
Recommendations, we added to 202.2 powers of board of directors. It's perfectly under that policy. So I'm asking to delete 202.27, 202.7, and add it to 202.
So you're recommending that 202.7 be deleted?
Yes.
May I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
McGinnis Unti, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Propose, no. The motion carries.
And then 203.1 formulation review and revising of policy is the same as ISB. ISB, just in a different order. So we'd like to update policy number as well as the title. And then the years that are listed are through 2026.
Are there any objections to marking it as reviewed? Thank you.
And as Karina mentioned, 202.2 then would come back for a first reading since we add it a paragraph to that.
202.7, right.
Yep. 204.9, our one board calendar. This is basically the calendar agenda of standing items that come before the board. We've got quite a few adjustments there as we normally look at it each year and make movement based on when, when is the best timing in order to bring those things forward, usually based on deadlines and when reports are due. A number of things have changed. So that'll come back before you at the next meeting as well. And then we had four additional policies through ISB that all have to do with board policy development, which is one of the primary roles of a board member. We simply didn't have anything in policy as was recommended for these things. So 209.1, development of policy, 209.2, adoption of policy, 209.3, dissemination of policy, and 209.4, suspension of policy are all short descriptive policies that we'd recommend come back as a first reading at the next meeting.
Any questions for Dr. Shutey at this time? Mr. Sodders, anything of note?
Yes. So we are excited to have Mr. Mark Perna join us almost exactly a week from right now, as a matter of fact. He will be presenting to our staff the morning of Monday, gosh, what month is it?
28th.
The 28th, Monday, September 28th. I'm already thinking about October so much. September 28th at 8:00 a.m., that's when our staff PD begins. And then Mr. Perna is going to present a free virtual keynote address regarding working with, working with young people, working with the youth. And we think that, you know, parents, educators, obviously, and business leaders here in town would be very interested in Mr. Perna's insights into working with young folks. So we really hope you all can join us. And please, please tell your friends and family and anyone else you know who might be interested to join us for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at reminders, in addition to that virtual keynote, we have a board work session this Wednesday, which is on the board's self-evaluation and the superintendent and board goal-setting. We'll be meeting in the conference rooms from 5:00 to 7:00. Teacher Quality Committee meeting, the fall meeting, virtual meeting is on October 6th, and Jan is a member of that committee. And Jan, you get to do two board policies for the next meeting.
Okay. Do I know what those are? Is that the 203.2 and the 203.4?
Yep.
Yep.
Gabby, I'll forward those to you also.
And our next board meeting is October 5th. We've had a number of committee meetings since we last met. Is there anything from the Finance Committee that we didn't talk about?
We talked about the year-end fund balances and report. We also talked a little bit about bonding capacity for future facilities, projects.
And our solvency rate is much better than we had expected. Isn't it 7.3%?
7.7.
Oh, yeah.
Internal Communications met. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, for those new to the board, that is the committee with the administr, the administrators here in central office and then members of the MEA, stewards, the representatives from the teachers associ, or, uh, union, sorry, apparently I can't speak tonight. We met last Friday and just really briefly, a couple of the things that we had to talk about were, it was a really great opportunity to hear from the teachers and how they're doing in their buildings and what kind of feedback that they're getting from their colleagues and the students. We clarified some things about staff coverage and leaves and what, what does it look like, you know, specific to COVID, if, if I'm in isolation or quarantined. So we were able to speak directly with those folks besides the documents that we've obviously already provided staff. There was some concern, you know, that, that they're concerned about burning out, burn, being burnt out or losing teachers because of, you know, just all of the changes and the things that they're being asked to do given COVID and, and things like that. They also shared, you know, frustrations with, that, that students are struggling when they're at home, either in isolation or doing the virtual learning and how there's some anxiety associated there. Questions about bandwidth, if we had enough bandwidth. And I think it was discovered that we're actually not using, I think it's, we're only using about 20% of our, our bandwidth during, and I act like I know what I'm talking about and I assure you I don't. But I told you, we only use about 20% during our peak times, so it's not a bandwidth issue. A lot of these virtual online learning platforms have an influx, obviously, of new users and so that can be slowing the programs down. But that's not an issue with our, on our side. And then just quickly, some other, other questions, clarifying some things about the keynote speaker and when that is and if it's on contract time or not. And then finally, the, the last thing that we spoke about were, or was Remind is that app that we are asking our staff to use to communicate with families. And there was a question about if they could stop receiving those messages in the evening times off contract. So if there was a way in the system so that they wouldn't be receiving those messages. And so it was really just, to sum up, it was really a meeting just to hear some feedback, answer some of those questions. Those meetings are really useful for us to connect and to have that opportunity, you know, FaceTime to be there and answer those questions directly. And I should note also that hopefully you all have received the email for the Equity Committee. We are starting that back up this year. And this year, we really are hoping to get committee members who are part of the public, hoping to get some students on board, and then employees outside of just the certified staff. In the past, it's just been certified staff. And I'd really like to see employee groups or people joining the committee from across all employee groups. So in the last few days, you've seen some communication in a Google form. So we're hoping to really get that going and get some excitement and interest from across a lot of groups in the community.
Thank you. Facilities Committee met on Friday. Sean, Mike, Sarah, anything?
We talked about potential facilities improvements. I guess the primary thing we talked about was air conditioning at the high school was the most prominent topic of discussion and other HVAC-related subjects, so.
Talked about bond capacity, which you mentioned in your finance meeting. We talked about record-low interest rates. And that maybe high school air conditioning can be done for a lot less than what we thought.
A lot less than perhaps we've been led to believe for quite a while, so.
I thought it was a meeting full of good news.
We can all use good news. Darren Acer this morning?
BNI participated in the Acer meeting. It was well-attended. All the respective parties were represented. Some of the highlight takeaways that I had were, the Marshall County representatives talked about how Marsh Town residents were, or they were receiving calls on some sticker shock related to property taxes, which in part were due to the bond coming on, the tax rolls for the Community College project for the first time, and also some ag land rollback. Steve also mentioned that with Iowa workforce development, there's been an expansion of counties covered. So I believe he said that our, our office now covers nine counties, I think he said, stretching all the way to like Centerville, Fairfield, Kiasakwa. So they're going to be stretched quite a bit. they're going to be stretched quite a bit. And just how the rural areas of the county have really been hit hard with the derecho damage and recovery there. Jared Heil also mentioned that they're working hard on trying to get delinquent taxes collected, and they'll be reaching out probably soon to the city and the school district regarding options in terms of how to further pursue that down the road. Iowa Valley Community College District, Robin talked about how the improvements that they're going to make to facilities in Marshall Town based on that recent bond referendum are likely will start taking place next spring. And she talked a little bit about how their calendar got pushed back as a result of the derecho, similar to the school district. Lynn Oberding talked about the new Economic Development Director having recently been hired. I think his first day was the day of the derecho, actually. And then about the displacement of her, their offices from Fisher Community Center due to damage and how they're at least temporarily going to be housed in the church across the street from here. Shelley Lovell from the Water Works talked about how they took damage to their plant relative to power, I believe, and so they're still working with insurance adjusters and experts on what they need to do in order to rectify the, the situation they've got there at the Water Works. And Iowa State University Extension, as well as the AAAs, talked about how their offices are back to fully operating and providing services, but for the most part, those services are being provided and/or encouraged to be done virtually when and if possible in light of the pandemic. Is there anything else that you can think of?
Thank you. What have we done this evening to improve the education of the students in the Marshall Town District?
Oh, we have grown reserves, financial ones.
We've received student feedback about the online and onsite classes.
Can I ask one other question? We're in the miscellaneous section of the agenda. It just occurred to me. Do, is it okay?
Yeah.
Is, is, I forget how waivers occur for testing, but do, do, have we received any state waiver for testing and/or has the state of Iowa gotten anything from the federal government related to that?
I don't believe any determinations have been made for this coming year on that.
Are there requests or no? I don't, I don't know how it works.
Well, generally, if there were a request, it would be, it would come from our Iowa Department of Education to the federal government for that.
Has that happened?
Not that I'm aware of.
There are a number of states that have done that, though, right?
We actually are just launching all testing profits, virtual.
The fast testing?
Yeah.
Yeah. So our intermittent testing is happening at the state level, but in terms of the end-of-the-year
state tests, there's been no yea or nay as to whether that's going to happen.
But you know, I mean, it's reasonable to assert that this is a, this could produce results that would be an aberration from trends, right?
Could, yes.
Okay.
Other things that we've done this evening that will make education better for our students?
I was just pulling up, we had 64 teachers that moved lanes, you know, so.
Pretty remarkable.
Pretty remarkable, a real commitment to continuing education amongst our faculty, so that's really cool to see.
My quote for this evening comes from Marion Wright Edelman. She is the Director of the National Children's Defense Fund. Those of you who have been on the board for a bit would have seen a video that I played a few years ago called "The Prayer for Children." Her quote is this, "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." Let's take a quick break. Come back at 6:45 for our readmission.